All right. Good evening, everyone. 6 o'clock. Sherwin zoning board appeals. I'm here for something else you may find disappointing. Um, I don't know if you are here for us. Well, may not slow down several weeks. Um, tonight is a continued hearing on 59 North Main Street. Uh, at about 8:15, the board of health is going to join us in session. Um, but until then, maybe, uh, proponent, Mr. Gateley could catch us up on where we've been in the last, uh, month. Many things have happened we want to hear about.
Okay, uh, Vin Gateley from HP Sherwin LLC. I am the owner and applicant of the 40B project located at 59 North Main Street. That is, for you that don't know, it's a 6.34 acre site. There will be 12 standalone condominium units, three of which would be affordable. Um, my company Heritage Properties, we've been in business 25 years. We're located in Sudbury and we are real estate developers and construction. And we would handle all of that, um, assuming that this project is approved. Uh, since the last meeting, we have been working on and are continuing to work on the peer review comments. The peer reviewer comments came to us on September 12th. Uh, there was 70-plus comments and we are working on a point-by-point response that we will have, uh, submitted back to the peer reviewer and to this board, uh, shortly. I'm hoping right now in the next week. Um, I believe that most of the comments that, um, we're going to be responding to, we are going to be able to accommodate and make some changes. And out of those changes, we will have a revised site plan. And I believe the changes that we're making are going to be very positive, uh, to the project and to the marketability of the, of the project. Um, we also, I just received from my landscape architect, a draft of a landscape plan, which I am very happy with. Um, I am now talking to my engineer because that has some ramifications on our site plan. And before we submit that, um, we, we just need to look at it. But the first pass on that landscape plan, I, I'm very happy with it. Um, I do want, before I submit it, um, and make it final, I do want to talk to my neighbor, um, the Marthasons, right next door, especially the lot line that divides our, our two properties and get their response to my architect's, uh, plan. Um, my engineer, um, can give you an update on some of the engineering issues that we have been working on and give you a, an update on that. I know we have a conservation meeting tomorrow night. Um, but I think at this point, unless there's any specific comments, I will let Peter Bemis give you an update on the engineering issues.
Okay. Um, if in the course of that, if we can, since we have the peer reviewer here tonight, if there are, thank, issues, it's terrific that there are many issues on which you are aligned, but maybe we can surface some of the ones that are aligned since everybody's here in the room.
Okay. That'll be good. Okay. I've got it blubbed by 17 just to make it easier because I'm going to use the board. You're actually, you both? I'll try to speak loud so it, so it picks up because I'd like to just try to point these out on the board. Is that work? You know, my, okay. Great. So Peter Bemis, engineer and design consultants. Um, so what we've done, uh, we've had a field visit with the Conservation Commission and, uh, that was probably the most important thing for us to have had, uh, in the interim since we had last met with you because it helped us identify those resources in the field and try to get their direct input by actually seeing those areas, uh, one-on-one. Uh, so what, what we've done is, uh, we did locate, uh, on our site plan, a, an existing foundation that was out at the site. It was probably an old, um, barn of some sort because there, there's a three, it's three-sided originally when we showed it. It showed four sides on it, as if it had been a, a foundation, uh, for the structure. And really what it was more of was the support structure for the walls and for the, for the roof. And, uh, my guess is they probably parked a truck in there or maybe some of the farm equipment, the tractor. Um, there's, some of the wood material is still there, some of the roof material is still there inside this enclosure, but the trees and everything else have kind of grown up around it. Um, the thought when we were in the field originally was we'd remove it and we'd make this a vegetated area. Um, we looked at it in the field and it was actually a pretty nice foundation. Um, it's just kind of neat out there and, and actually we asked the director of water, Mrs. Martha's and who could see it from her window, what do you think about it? She likes it too. So instead of it being something that we're going to eliminate, we're actually going to embrace it and make it part of the plan. Um, this was in an area of restoration anyways. Uh, we've got our well that was identified in this area and that well actually has been drilled. Uh, we've got a yield on the order of around 15 gallons a minute, which is about twice what we needed as our minimum. So we're in actually very good shape for our water supply for that well. A well to the back, we actually have the same results. So we're in pretty good shape with that as well. Um, so again, that foundation we want to retain. And then one of the other items that the commission picked up on was the fact that we had, um, erosion control barriers that maybe responded more towards what the single-family home development was going to be on the site and, and then possibly the engineer that was involved in it, just kind of drawing the, um, the systems that we needed, i.e., our stormwater management system. And instead of being parallel to the structure, it was perpendicular. So instead of it, uh, being more in harmony with that space and taking up as little footprint as possible, it took up a lot more footprint. Uh, so what we did is I went back and pulled those things back and changed the geometry. We still get the same infiltration capacity, but we were able to pull the sedimentation erosion control barrier away from the tree line. So now we don't even have to alter any of the trees that are on the whole right side of the lot. So what the Martha's and sees today from their windows and from their property, they'll see tomorrow because we can keep every one of those trees. So we thought that was really an important, uh, aspect to retain. Um, the other was that we were going to go out and around all of this because we were going to have a full restoration area of this, this area that had previously been affected by, uh, the farm activities. Uh, we're just going to go, what we've done now is basically just said, look, we've gone in there, we had to drill our well, so we've cut down some trees, we've pushed in, we had to go in there with an excavator. Um, let's just see what it's like when we're done. Pull back. Uh, mother will heal herself is one option. The other is that we can be somewhat proactive and do some plantings in that area. But instead of a wholesale regrading and, and redefining of that area, it'd probably be better just to go in, decide, um, you know, whether it's worth pulling down some of the, um, invasives because we've got some, um, invasives that are actually growing up the trees. Uh, so, you know, we can actually take some of those trees down probably because we've got some trees that are actually standing dead, but they're full of vines. So, uh, it's something that we can work with the commission on one-on-one and just say, that tree, do we save it? Do we keep it? Do we cut it and replace it? So we're going to work, work to that end. And so we pulled our cetacean barrier back, uh, through that whole stretch and we don't have to go out and around those things any longer. Uh, the other thing we identified was the barn that was there had always been standing. Um, when we started this project, it's no longer there. The barn's been taken down, the existing house has been taken down. So those features were, were eliminated, uh, from the plan. Uh, because we really don't have to concern ourselves with taking down that structure anymore. So again, the erosion control barrier can be pulled back or we can go in and do some restoration if that's the, uh, final decision of the commission. As we come to the back end of the site, that's where we enter the riverfront area. So we had no activities in the inner repairian zone. We had activities in the outer repairian zone. We have a, a property that's on the order of 120,000 square feet of, of land that was in the outer repairian zone. You're entitled to have 10% of your site activity within that zone. That allowed us 12,000 square feet plus of, of activity. The goal was again, let's try to minimize that footprint. Let's try not to take up as much space with activities in that area. We've got it down to 3,500 square feet now. Um, and we were about twice that before. So we're, we're on the order of about 25% of what the allowable is, um, under the, uh, under the act. Uh, so that pulled the erosion control barrier from the back. Again, no trees are affected now. There's, uh, the field in that area is mostly golden rod. So much of that existing golden rod can be maintained along that edge as the interface between the wood line and our work line where our lawns will, will be, uh, be constructed. Again, we had activities for constructing our well. So again, we can go in there and do some form of restoration or again, just kind of let mother heal herself. She's going to put golden rod back because that's the seed bank that's already going to be in the soil profile. Um, that concludes that, that section of the site. The units are the same as you had. Uh, we did identify the fact that we're going to need some sort of water distribution structure. So, uh, we've identified a shed, uh, on both of these water lines. That shed could turn into a vault. Uh, we have an expert that's going to be, uh, as part of our water, uh, design team. And I've not been able to get him on board yet. Um, I'm still hopeful he's going to, going to be on board. We had to get all of our field work done for putting in the wells. We'll determine whether it's better to put in a vault or put in an upper structure. To put in one structure versus two structures, right now I'm identifying two, uh, for you this evening and that's what I'll be presenting to the Conservation Commission tomorrow night. Um, those are outside of the, uh, immediate areas next to the well. We're trying to pull them back closer to where the, uh, the homes are located. Uh, the other thing that's not shown on the plan, but it was my intent for it to show, it'll actually show on the next sheet because it's on the wrong layer, is a kiosk. Uh, so mail, I'm calling it a mail, uh, not M-A-I-L and not M-A-L-E. Mail and community, postal, right. And community, uh, kiosk. Because we would anticipate that there could be something for notification for the members. This is going to be a spot that we anticipate everyone's going to probably go to at least once or maybe it's, uh, you know, twice a day, uh, whatever, as they're, as they're departing. Uh, we, the other thing I should have identified, we see this as a one-way travel roadway. We always have. Uh, the people would come in and they would go in a clockwise manner around the site. Um, that's what we anticipated. Now-
And the kiosks in Charlotte.
In the kiosks, yeah, the kiosk is on this shot, not, not on your shot. But it's going to be here on the exit. Um, so, and we, we intend, rate's drawn right now. There's not a little pull-off, but I think we would actually make like a slight little indentation so that folks have the ability to slide over a little bit. Um, we're also making it so they could actually just drop mail, um, from the, from the vehicle as, as another option. It was a thought. So, you know, it's either going to get out and go over or, or something to that effect. We can work on the details of what it is. We, we definitely want to have a separate kiosk location for mail and, and for, for community, uh, notification. Uh, a cistern on the right side coming in. Uh, we wanted to have a fire, uh, protection system here. So we're proposing a 5,000 gallon cistern. Uh, 5,000 gallons is, you know, two times really the supply that's needed to put out a fire. And they're going to come with a pump or truck that's probably going to have half that volume anyways. So really it's, it's talking about having three available. Um, so that's identified. And again, it's on the wrong layer, so it's not on the plan you have. It will be on the right layer when you, we finally get this plan printed out. Um, when I mentioned to you about the, the chambers and being in a different orientation, now you can see them here. This chamber was out in this direction and this one was actually perpendicular to this building. So again, they're, they're in par, parallel in line and it allowed us to bring the sedimentation erosion control barrier closer to the structure. We have defined our, our soil absorption system limits. Uh, we fully expect to get a full, uh, plan together to be able to submit to the board of health for our soil absorption system, um, at the same time that we're submitting our water supply, uh, parameters to them for review as well. So I think on the, on the, the, uh, peer review consultant, I know they were recommending a wider pavement width, so I do want to discuss that with the, the board. Um, as designers, if we're going to one-way travel, 18 feet is more than enough. We had, actually prepared an exhibit showing how the fire apparatus would come through the site and traverse the entire site. It actually is shown on, on this plan, um, the, the wheel movements of the vehicle. Uh, we would like to stay at 18. Um, I don't disagree that 20's wider and, and, and more apt to, um, give you more turning movement room, but it also invites two-way traffic flow. And I, I just feel like that's going to have somebody pulling out of their driveway here and, you know, the guy next door could be pulling out of their driveway and one's going to go one way, one's going to go the other way. I think if everybody knows that we're all going in this turning movement from day one, it's just a better play for everyone in the neighborhood. Lot safer traffic movements, uh, safer for, for public safety coming in, visiting the site and, uh, responding to an emergency as well. So I would like to stay at, uh, 18 if we could, uh, and go one way.
Have you heard from, uh, traffic safety at all on that?
Traffic safety.
We've got a traffic safety committee.
Oh, no, Ben, I didn't, we didn't go there. Yeah, we didn't go there at all. We've not been there.
You know, maybe you can get them a copy and ask them for their views on that.
Okay.
Sure, because of the fire. I've had some thoughts too. Uh, how do you feel about the 18 and 20? Wider pavement tends to not get a favorable perception in town. Always, uh, well, I think it'll be wider than Mother Road. I have a thought.
There was a time when, uh, communities were building 30 and 40-foot wide sediment rooms and-
They were.
I actually was speeding down one one day and had a conversation with the police officer about my speed. So I just sort of empathize with the desire for narrower pavement. It's also from an environmental point of view and it's less runoff and all that type of thing. Um, I don't believe in any of the materials. The one-way circulation was actually identified. But I, I don't know what the magic number is, but I am concerned about, um, the 18 feet. Uh, for one thing, what I think one of the things we asked for was a, uh, swept path vehicle analysis, meaning let's run a fire truck around there and make sure that the fire truck can negotiate some of the sharper turns. But over and above that, and on a personal level, I'm actually considering buying a house in a, in a multi-family type of development. Parking is a real problem. You know, you, you have, uh, you know, the, the spaces in the garage and the, uh, spaces between the garage, uh, and the roadway for, uh, residents to park. But people do have parties, gatherings, people visiting and things like that. So at some point, you're going to be getting parking on that road and it's a very difficult thing to enforce. I mean, the, the town police can't be driving down all of the roads and ticketing people for parking. So you're going to have people parking there and I think it's kind of the combination of the larger emergency vehicle, uh, maybe a service vehicle occasionally, like a trash truck or something, and coming to grips with the fact that you're going to need some kind of overflow parking. So that's a kind of a long, rounded-up way of saying that I empathize with the desire for narrower pavement. I think we'd have to look closely at whether 18 feet is suitable or maybe, maybe a shade wider. We, we don't want, you know, a subdivision-style roadway, but there's kind of a magic number. I don't know that we have that. I'd rather like to talk to the engineer about his thoughts about that. Emergency access and parking in addition to just regular vehicle lines.
So it sounds like an issue on which there's likely to be a solution. We don't have the solution here tonight and the whole more, uh, thought by the right parties may, may get more clear.
Sure, we could work together if that was something to recommend to the boards.
Yeah, I was going to add that, that, um, I thought that we had, uh, had an illustration of the one-way traffic flow and it wasn't. So, so to his point, I, I wouldn't have expected him to assume that there was and, and it would have been implied that it was two-way because we didn't have that notice. But, um, from my perspective personally, and it just didn't get conveyed to the engineer in my office to put that on, is that this has always been a one-way and I think in my presentations to you, I've always described it as being a one-way travel flow through the site.
Right, but as soon as you've got any, uh, representation that, that shows, you'll definitely get it to the peer reviewer and to Gino. And Gino can get it to-
Right.
-traffic safety and place them. Our fire department often has pretty strong reviews on why roads should be and how they're putting them in.
Right, they're probably the ones that are going to be most interested and most solid than the others.
Right.
So those were the-
Will they be able to park on the grass?
Yes, so the, the fire turning movement, we did run that analysis and again, that probably was not part of the packet, so we'll make sure that gets off to, to peer review. And then we did, um, and actually the, the plan that you have does show this. We do have that, um, overflow area for parking along the, um, internal part of our, our green area. And that's the gravel pave system. So that was going to be our permeable, uh, stone. It's in an interlock system so that, you know, we're not creating more impervious areas, but we do have the ability for vehicles to park on that, uh, shoulder right around the site. And we had set that up so that there was, um, enough room for one vehicle from every unit. And the, the thought is if there are parties, then there, there are enough spaces for those 12 cars. And then if they're all doing it at the same time, then we never are going to have enough room for everybody anyways. And so, um, but, uh, that was our intent, was that we would have enough room here.
Well, I, you know, my thoughts on that.
Um, I think we did, it's either eight or 10 feet. I'll, I'll stay corrected on the right amount. I'll make sure that it is illustrated properly, but it's, it's eight or 10 feet.
If you're all having a party at the same time, give your marketing team a voice.
My thought on that actually is that that area maybe need, needed to help people back out of the driveway.
Right.
Also counted for parking.
Right.
It was also probably a minor implementation, but you probably need some kind of directional signage, like saying one-way, maybe some kind of pavement marking at the entrance, something like that. The idea is fine, good idea.
Yeah, well, I know one of the comments was signage, "Construction and, um, and permanent." So, um, I know I had in Vin's lap, a permanent monument sign on the entrance, "What would you like to do?" And, uh, we will look at directional signs within the development as well and define those.
So is there, there's no curb at the edges of roadway or-
Uh, no, we have a barn.
Cape Cod type?
Yeah, Cape Cod style. So you'd be able to go up and over though. The issue for us was to say, "That's part of your travelway and this is part of your parking area and I want to separate them." We've done that successfully.
Yes.
On several projects. Exactly. It's well-defined for travelway, but then also for parking, you know, get, get, get your, get your car off the travelway. Uh, so you go up on the lip and you know you're up. You know you're off the lip and you're back on the travelway. So it, so it serves two purposes.
Okay.
So, so one other point that I wanted to raise was that there was commentary about traffic study. As you know, in, in one of my presentations, I went through some extensive review on traffic study. We did ask that that be something that would be formally waived by the board because we didn't feel as though it was needed, that the route number that we're on has a lot of traffic. Uh, we don't believe our development is going to create, uh, a traffic burden on, on North Main Street. We also feel that we've got very good site distance, um, entry onto and off of, uh, North Main is, is going to be fine. And, uh, we just don't want to have to have the expense of, uh, bringing in a traffic engineer to design and come up with numbers that really are going to be superfluous to this project. So again, I would hope that we could do that. Um, I know peer reviewers asking for it, so I, again, I don't want to be disrespectful and not respond to what the peer review wants. Uh, we just asked the board to, that could weigh in on that because we did already present it and ask for that.
All right. And PSC, your position is?
Our position is that, uh, mass housing and others have asked for it. So it's one reason we restated the fact that it was not submitted. I think the, you know, the, the issue is probably not trip generation in terms of its impact on intersection operations or anything like that. I think, you know, what we'd like a traffic study and/or the engineering record to address clearly is site distance. They show that already on, on the drawings. I don't know whether that extends to some recommendations for any brush or obstruction clearing to enhance that, uh, at the entrance. We do need somebody to take a look at that little entrance driveway there to make sure that it gives adequate delineation in terms of either signage or a pavement marking or something else to, uh, implement the one-way signage. So I, I think it can be either waiving the traffic study or evaluating the german aspects of it, which are fundamentally, uh, how the entrance operates and, and, uh, site distance. That would have an impact on intersection operations, which you usually look at. Uh, the crash rate is not going to be applicable because right now it's, uh, it's not an intersection. Crash rates really are most germinated intersections and it's not. So I think a lot of aspects of the traffic study, uh, are, would be probably just an academic exercise here.
So if the traffic management plan or some other documentation from the applicant contain these sort of minimal elements of here the site distance is, they meet this regulation here, the strips, they meet this, so that there's some documentation-
Yeah.
-you'd say we probably don't actually need-
I, I agree.
... the study per se.
I think you don't need the study. We had, in a separate paragraph, addressed the idea of a traffic management plan, which is-
Right.
-fundamentally something to work out with the police department, it's applicable to construction, paving of the project and what the police department needs necessary to ensure a safety in terms of construction vehicles and things like that. So, uh, if you don't consider that part of the traffic study, then I think it's, uh, it's fine to handle that through the police department, their traffic safety.
Would it be reasonable from a planning standpoint to maybe incorporate these elements in the traffic management plans that we'd have a, a record? Or is that just apples and pomegranates and you'd never put the two together?
It's entirely appropriate, in my opinion.
You know, I, I would agree. I mean, we have no problem doing a traffic management plan for you and address the points that, that he's raised because they're all, they're all warranted. I mean, we're, we're doing that, but it's not all in one vehicle, so to speak.
So to speak.
So we can do that. Um, I think it would make sense.
Might be a nice way of handling it.
It's an extra document, but I, I don't see a problem doing it.
Okay.
And we'll have, we'll have construction and then what would be the permanent. I think that's a, that's a good plan too. Because I know one of the items you said was a construction fence and I was going to, again, put that on Vin. Uh, I think he should secure the site.
Yes, absolutely.
So, um, you know, I think we'll do that and we can do that as part of the construction, uh, excuse me, the traffic management plan. We could identify that because that's really a construction detail. So I'll, I'll do that.
What else were you at odds on?
Yeah, I'm not saying I didn't have odds on a lot of things, hit all. I know there was one comment-
We're not disappointed in you there.
Yeah, good.
I know there was one comment about, uh, the number of bedrooms.
Oh, that, that we need to talk about.
Yeah.
For sure. That changes the whole project.
Yeah, and we've already, uh, I think what may have, we, we sent a dump of every piece of paper related to this project, no matter when it was, uh, submitted as part of the record to the peer reviewer. And yes, there was some conflicting plans. I know there, originally, we had some three-bedroom units in the plans. If you're speaking to item 20 of the peer review, and I think you probably are-
It's 19 and 20.
I think, I think it's a great discussion. I might ask us to hold it until the board of health is here.
Oh, good idea.
Because they, they wish you more than anybody else.
Right, right. So we'll come back to that.
So other than that, what else you got?
Um, I know they brought up a point about the swept, but we're going to incorporate some items into the swept. Uh, as I said, uh, the, uh, snow storage, um, again, we, we had, we told you in, in the public hearing process that there was limited areas for snow storage. It's part of our stormwater management plan. They will have to haul off snow, uh, after certain, uh, excessive events. So, uh, we can identify where there are those limited areas on site for the snow storage, but after that, they do have to haul off and, and we're acknowledging that. And there'll be notes to that effect so that they have to be held, you know, the management company will be, have to be held to that, uh, requirement to remove snow.
And that sounds like where you were going to in number 37, right, sir?
Uh, so for landscaping, I guess I should talk about it. You don't have the plan yet and we didn't get it to you. Steve Cosmos is the architect that's been retained for this project. Um, I do have a plan that Stephen's done, but I, I really don't want to illustrate it because he, um, did not realize that all those street trees along North Main Street, we want to embrace them all. And he was kind of, yeah, well, he was just like, he wasn't supplementing, he was like replacing. And I don't want to do that. As it is, there is that 48-inch tree and I've been hugging it ever since we started the project. It's located right here. And I've been still continuing to hug it, uh, but- And I've been still continuing to hug it, but I, Stephen's saying let it go. And he's probably right. I mean, it's a tree that's, that's going to be near, end of life cycle, and, you know, his feeling is that we can do better with what we planned. The, the others that are here, we're too close-
So they'll be planting a 48-inch tree?
Well, no, we're not going to do a 48-inch tree at all, but I, it, you know, we're just, we have a lot of work to do near it, and the concern that we have is that there's, it's just going to get damaged, and it may not show that damage at the onset, but it may show it, you know, five years out, and then we are much further behind with the growth of all the other trees that we're going to plant in the project, so.
And-
That's why we brought a landscape architect in, is to kind of level that playing field, so that I don't make a mistake as a designer.
Got it. And if I read your number 12 correctly, you were sort of with his original landscape architect saying, whether you love those trees or not, they're probably going to take some damage from the construction work, and you need to be thinking about that.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Yeah, I trust the landscape plan will have it, which is kind of a tree protection detail.
Right.
A lot of plans, if possible, if you can keep the construction vehicles out of the drip zones of the trees and put some physical barriers out there to protect them, you know, it's always good to retain quality trees wherever possible because, as somebody once said, you can't plant a 48-inch tree or a 44 or whatever. So we want to embrace and preserve whatever is there, and, you know, that does require a certain protection function. I think we also just indicated that the landscaping, you know, needed to be addressed in further detail, and we're glad to see that there's a landscape plan in this way, so.
Okay. Well, Gino, I was not at last night's planning board hearing, but I understand there was some enthusiastic discussion of trees.
Absolutely.
How unusual in this town.
And that was for trees that are damaged as well, and even dead, so.
So embracing dead trees?
Absolutely.
Okay. In a famous comment from one of our selectmen, Paul Durant has indicated that all the damaged trees on the side of the road are people voting with their vehicles. Pretty funny. All right, all right, so there's a little work to be done, but it sounds like people are largely on the same page on the landscape plan, from what we know so far.
Right. So the, the other items that I know that the peer review brought up was that we did provide you with a list of what we anticipated being the waivers or variances, if you will. I'm not sure that that was provided, and I also don't want, want to still state for the record that that's inclusive because I'm just a lowly civil engineer here, and there may be some legal things that I overlook, so I'm still encouraging Mr. Gateway to have that attorney of his to look over my shoulder to make sure I didn't miss anything.
This is the, this is the May 11 initial?
Yeah, I gave you a full list, and I'm not sure that that got passed along to them in the, in the data dump.
Probably worth heavier, heavier than we visited that, so it'd be-
Because that's what I was going to do in my, it's item number 68. I was going to just say, item 68, see attach. But it's, it's still, from my perspective, it's our starting point, and we identified as being all of the waivers or variances we would need for the project.
And since the board of health is not yet here, Michael Lesser for the ConsCom, do you want to, you've been listening quietly and intently to all these comments about how well things are going with the ConsCom. Do you want to speak for yourself?
Sure. Yes, some little birdie told me that there's a busy hearing going on next door, and it's unclear when it was going to end, so that they could come in here. So they're not so free to just pick their schedule. Yeah, I have a list of things, and yes, I would say that Peter's summary in the beginning was reasonable, and that will, is used to go to site, and I think we, yeah, he summarized it fine, and yes, there's that little stone wall there that we will keep giving the, giving the preferences of the neighbor, as for that there too. In terms of where we are now and going forward for us on our process, I'll just go through a list of some things here, not necessarily-
And here they come.
Yes, and when they come, I'll be, uh-oh, jeez.
Uh-oh.
Just now it's getting going.
He meant to say, now we are glad to welcome the board of health.
Why, you guys, you're open, because I-
We had a long discussion.
I'll start with a few things, and when you guys are ready, I'll, I'll leave with the peer review of, in the landscape plan, I guess you will, will you be able to send that out before tomorrow, or you're just going to be presenting it tomorrow?
If I can get Stephen to make the edits that I need him to make between now and tomorrow, yes, I tried to reach him today.
Hopefully he presented, and I don't know, will that include the, one, the turf management plan that was also in the peer review? And it's bullet number in the peer review, it's a-
Help me out.
There's a paragraph 46.
Thank you.
You could think about that, whether that's part of your landscape plan. You don't have to say anything more than-
We have, yes, we have.
I mean, you obviously want a condition-
We pulled it back. I mean, from, from what you saw originally, I took that to heart, and we did pull it back quite a bit.
This plan, will you have a copy of this that might be a little clearer to demarcate the bubble zone? I mean, this thing is very hard to read on this, but-
You'll have a full-size plan.
Okay, fine. And also some matching of what these areas are going to be, because you're going to have to march through what they do.
Understood.
So that's the extent that you can get that straight to that. Marching through that there, so the landscape plan, yeah, and on the plans, to maybe be clear about where the land limits are in general, they're better in our jurisdiction. The, on the wells, I guess the board of health can hear it too. So in terms of work there, did you get the good quality, have you gotten quality results too?
Uh, no, the yield. I'm just saying, right now, we have the yield that we needed.
Okay, then I'll leave it for them to pursue that. The stormwater stuff, I guess more way, I guess more way to get the peer review on the stormwater against the DEP standards, are you, when, are you going to give, in your replies, are there any issues about giving all the information so that we can-
No.
Know that there'll be any problem with them proceeding on the stormwater?
We fully expect that we would be, be able to address all of the comments that were made by peer review, and that we would be in compliance with DEP stormwater management guidelines.
Well, wait, we need them to do that review.
Right. I won't have that by, by tomorrow, but we'll have that at your upcoming cycle.
All I was going to say is, to the extent that depending on your process for replying to all of the points, I would maybe suggest that if you consider that you might, if there's just some issues that are holding them up on doing the stormwater review, that you get those answers to them sooner than later, so that the stormwater review can start as quickly as possible. So that's, you don't have any surprises there. So that, I would think, actually, I should have let that weeks ago, in terms of you trying to accelerate the answers to those particular questions, so that, I assume, I don't know how the storm form would take you to do that, but, yeah, we just get it done as soon as we're better. The other things are, let's see, the landscape, all these different plans. On the waivers that are requested from conservation commission, we've talked about them there. At this point, our position would be that you probably should not grant any of the waivers, but at this point, you do not need any of the waivers to possibly get this reviewed. The, some of the ones are no longer relevant, because we've worked out some of the fees. And some of them, I don't think are going to come up, the 50-foot no alteration zone, which is often a big one. At this point, given the previous alterations to the, to the no alteration zone, and with some of the mitigation and restoration issues, the way the project is now, it could probably go through without that. With that, we want that in place in case changes occur in the future, but it's not a, not a needed waiver at this point to get through, but I wouldn't want to have it waived in just in case other things come forward in the future and other changes. So we would recommend not to be waived, but I don't think you'll find that to be a constraint at this point, in the way the project is. But that's just, we will formally document that, these, the propositions on that, if you can see.
Please.
But I would say that I don't think any of the waivers are a barrier to the project moving forward, and they're not needed. You might come up with others in your legal review, but we would probably recommend that you don't need to grant any of them.
So where you're sitting now, and, you know, without prejudice to think, change facts or, or things coming up in, in the legal review, it looks like there are going to be no needed waivers at the end of the day?
That, yeah, we would, no needed, I guess, sir. I'm not sure about that term, but I would, we will recommend that you do not grant any of them, but I do not think it will-
But, but you think that-
It will stop you from permitting.
Okay.
Sorry to be more lawyer than you want, but, uh, the, so, but that's basically all I need to say now, other than, yeah, just make sure you can clarify all those areas for tomorrow night. And I'll leave the rest of it for tomorrow night.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Have some, guys?
Well, the board of health, when we last spoke with you about this project, you know, the, the wells were going to be drilled, and then we were going to know a whole lot more, and, and now they have been. So what the engineer said was that they thought the well drilling went well, that they had very strong flow, I think 15 gallons per minute in both wells, and there was no commentary on what was coming out of the wells, presumably it was water and mostly clean. But where, where is board of health on the drinking water, the septic system, or anything else you think we should know about?
Okay.
And, and, and I'm sorry, but can you come up forward and-
Question, were the wells pumped simultaneously over some period of-
Sorry, got to come up near the microphone.
I need chairs.
Yeah, right, drag a chair up.
Let's do it that, there you go.
Okay, so were the, do I need to tilt that, or is this sufficient?
No, you need to be near it.
Okay, so were the wells pumped simultaneously and for how long? And was that charted? I don't know, are you the peer reviewer?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, great, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Because that would be a, a question in terms of just-
All right, Peter?
Yeah, we've, we've not done that type of, of analysis yet, but they were, there was a period of time when both wells were being pumped, because we wanted to see if there was any connection between them.
So the-
It was important to us to know.
And was the, the neighbor's well being tested at the same time? So that's another test to come later?
Exactly, that would come later.
Okay.
So we didn't arrange for that either. But we just wanted to see if there was any relationship between our two wells, because they are going to be the closest to each other, if you will. I mean, we're going to be further away from our butters well. And we did not find any relationship whatsoever between the two of them. So that was really encouraging for us.
There actually is a fairly detailed protocol of health regulations about geo-hydroanalysis necessary for other than single-family residences, and I do not believe that the applicant has requested a waiver of any of that.
We did. But we didn't say we wouldn't, we said, to the extent possible, we would try to meet it. I've not said that we won't meet it at all, and I haven't been able to say that we'll meet all of it. We're going to try.
My, my opinion would be that analysis is generally, it should not be waived. I would also raise the issue of whether there is an impact on wetlands due to the drawdown of water by the wells, so I think that may be something that we would continue to discuss.
Well, the, the wetland impact, I can assure you, the, these wells are down, drawing from much lower in the aquifer, and where, one of them was 800 feet, I want to say the other one was 700 feet. So they're really not having any interplay with that surface wetland.
Yeah, I have no information.
But I'll, we'll get to what you need. Yeah, understood, we'll get to what you need.
All right, so if I'm hearing the interplay here, the issue of what, the extent to which the existing town board of health geo-testing protocol, if I'm saying correctly, is going to be followed, is still open. There's a possible path through the thicket that the board of health will find acceptable, and which the developer can live with, but we don't know if we found that path yet, or is it clear that there's a great divergence?
We're going to have a professional consultant who's advising us to, to that aspect of it.
Got it.
And again, my, my charge to him would be, I want to meet all of these requirements.
Okay.
You know, let's try to do that. And if, if there is something that we're not meeting, for what reason? Would you, you know, tell me why? And then I would be able to then inform you what that issue is.
Right, and, and that consultant is who?
It's Don Prevention.
Okay.
He's the gentleman that we want to retain. I mean, that's who we've solicited to be on board for this, and I'm still hopeful that he will be the engineer that we have.
Okay.
He's been involved in other projects that both Vin and I have worked on, so that's why we would like to work with him.
And is he familiar by any chance to PSC or the board of health?
Uh, he knows the board of health requirements, because he's been involved, I believe, in some other matters in town.
Okay. It's not, it's not necessary, just a-
I have his name, but I can't recall one.
Yeah, right, I'm sure there was a project he's been on.
I'll put that information, Don Prevention is an engineer, is he a P?
Yes, he is, yeah.
Okay, but he does septic system work. I didn't know he did well work.
So my question would be, is he a well professional?
Uh, he does, he does water supply systems.
Okay, so I know his background.
And if I may, because he's never worked with us on our well regulations, he's only worked on soil testing. So with that said, I would ask the question, is he familiar with our well regulations?
I sent him to me.
Okay, so that doesn't, oh, he's got a, you know, obviously welcomed to call with questions. The first question, if I may, Madam Chair, is to ask the question, you said you drilled these wells, who was the well driller?
It was, it was Bay State President.
Okay, have they yet filled out the required state forms, the well completion reports, so that we can have those in our office?
I know he's, he's working on them, they're not submitting, because we were going to make a formal application to revert these wells from being residential, which is how we know that we drilled them, to be suitable for our multifamily project.
Thank you. And are these going to be either private wells or public wells?
They are going to be private wells.
Okay, so they will fall under the board of health jurisdiction if they're private wells? So I would suggest, and also state requirements as it relates to the well drill completion report. So I have not been contacted by anyone to do any well pump tests per our requirements, nor have I received any information. That's all I can offer to the board at this time, and Madam Chair, if I'm okay, you know, speaking on that behalf. And I do have other questions as well, but as it relates to the wells, again, I have not received anything at this point, as the applicant has already indicated.
Right, okay, fair enough, so.
Yeah, we, we needed to do this in a law, I would say, on our own, I mean, there was really nothing to get them involved in yet, because we're just going to be, there are two wells that we drilled for two single-family homes that we have permits for.
Right.
We knew that going in.
Right.
But we didn't, as I said to you before, I didn't have a project if I didn't get my yield.
Right, right. You, you were clear before, you were drilling-
That's why we're here tonight.
You were drilling them and testing them for use, so you weren't going to make them, make of them, and now that you know there's some water there, you'll look back and go through the process and-
And I know that he sent them out for analysis, and I would have heard from him if there was an issue, but I just don't have that report, so I don't want to say anything-
Right.
Other than the fact that I, you know, I'm confident that it's been done.
Okay.
So, so the, the aspect with the board of health that's important would be that whole bedroom count, because that is the, again, it's the basis of our project, and it's, it's important that I emphasize that again. It's a two-bedroom per unit project based upon the DEP flow analysis for that. It's a 150 gallons per dwelling unit, and we're 1,800 gallons per day for our project. Our well consumption is going to be based upon that same volume, and that's why I was saying to you that I had that minimum well yield. We've got more than twice what we needed for our minimum well yield. And the, and then our loading for our project is well below, as I said to you before, we're actually 100 and some odd gallons more than what we would have been with our three, five-bedroom homes, because that would have been 1,650. So we're 150 gallons more than what we would have had with our three, three homes. The other aspect of it would be that it's in one area, our leaching area, but again, it's, it's far away from our butters, we're, we're close to ourselves, we're further away from our butters by putting it in one central location in the middle of the site. So I just think that's the most important aspect of the project, and we, we go forward knowing that we're 150 gallons per unit and that we're 1,800 gallons per day.
And, and where is, where is the board of health on the bedroom count issue? If anywhere?
So I don't forget, though, just another issue, and this will be somewhat based on on the, the bedroom count and the flow, so EA Housing has a certain number of gallons that are allocated to it, and, uh, as you said, it's going to be comparable to the flow calculated from five-bed, bedroom homes, but I think we just need to consider, and this is part of what the EHIR is intended to address, although it doesn't, it's strictly on, on the approved gallonage flow, but I think that the nature of use of three, five-bedroom homes versus these units, which I think are more likely to have, say, two residents per home, is going to effectively be more people than would have been in three, five-bedroom homes, so the gallonage may be less, but it will be more concentrated, so to speak, so, um, that goes, it's just something to consider, so it sounds like it's a wash or it's a little bit better, but I think in, in actual use, it's not necessarily that, but we are restricted to just look at gallons, not concentration of those gallons.
Sure, of course.
Uh, so I want to back up a little, because I don't know what you went over, I've, the Board of Health staff and, and the Board, some Board members have gone through what paperwork we did have, and we still just don't feel like we have enough to really evaluate, um, this, the water and the wastewater, the wastewater in particular.
Okay, so-
So, we did receive paper plans at the, um, meeting, I think it was the July twenty-fifth, and that's been received at the Board of Health, but the, the same as what we had had previously, and where it doesn't sound like, sometimes when we hear things talked about this project, that those plans are the latest, and/or they don't include all the information that we need.
Right.
So, and I would assume that if you need to know details of what's still not on there, you could share examples of what that is missing.
Right, it, it sounds like a lot of things, with me at least, wind up being a list, and maybe that's where this goes, is a list of, here's what, here's what we think is missing.
Okay, would a deficiency letter be something that you could put together to some-
Yeah, deficiency letter makes it sound, well, whatever.
Yeah, a missing letter, what's still missing.
Right, it's, right.
Missing pieces of information that-
Right, or apparently missing, because they might say, wait, it's over here, you know, it's a-
Okay, it hasn't been something that we can-
Right, needed information, that's, that's better, there's the answer.
That either have put our hands on, or can find on the online files.
Good.
And I assume that the peer reviewer would have the same, uh, interest in that information as we do, because it's fundamental to the, the evaluations. Um, let's see, uh, the plans that we got at the meeting, that they were able to, to provide us the nice big hard copy, they weren't specifically septic system design plans, they were more about drainage, um, so we haven't been able to find that. And then, in terms of the floor plans, so, um, so I guess, would you like us to go through the exercise of just specifying each unit and what we see as the bedroom count, and then move to that, move to the next step from there? Is that, would it be helpful?
I, I, I think so, I, I, it sounds like where we're probably going to wind up going, if I'm reading the tea leaves correctly, um, although I read them incorrectly all the time, um, is, if you counted up all the rooms in these structures and applied just our, just our rules to them in, in a vac, in a vacuum, um, you would get a certain number of deemed bedrooms, um, and then they might fairwell say, well, wait, we, we plan to deed restrict down to two, and then we'll have, have that discussion.
Okay, so-
But it would be useful to know what the deemed number is, if that can be done without too many brain cells being destroyed. I think at the end of the day, we're probably going to wind up having to deal with, not of last summer's decision, some level of deed restriction solution here.
Okay, so we can, since there is another EA, um, development in town, we can use how we evaluated that, it was not a forty-B, so, you know, we're accustomed to looking at those kinds of units, but at the last meeting I was at, where we were presenting, you talked about the specific floor plans or individual, uh, dwelling units still being in flux, so-
Yeah.
How do we go about counting?
Well, I, I think, um, I know there was a comment in the, in the peer review comments, um-
Twenty, I think.
Yeah, twenty, yes, and then also in nineteen, you mentioned-
Right.
Twenty-eight bedrooms, and that's because when I submitted a whole dump of information that has been presented, um, the plans have evolved, and there were earlier plans that had a few three-bedroom units, and that's what brought the count up to twenty-eight. Those have since been superseded by what we now have, and I don't think Board of Health has, and I will get those over to you immediately. We have now, um, basically finalized our, our plans, we have four unit plans, uh, one of which is what we call the, the featured house, it's the larger house, the first house on the left, um, facing North Main Street, and, and of the eleven other units, they are all interchangeable with our three other unit types, and, uh, there was a comment made, a comment twenty in the review comments about lofts, which, um, I guess the comment was that they could be construed to be a third bedroom, and, uh, yes, we do have lofts, because we have first-floor masters, although we have, uh, the predominant unit we, we expect will be, uh, purchased, will be first-floor bedroom units, um, although we are offering a, a unit which will be bedrooms up with an elevator option, and that would just allow for a much larger, open first-floor area, which we think will have some appeal to the market, um, what we're finding in our market research is that fifty-five and over projects are now appealing to people who are on the younger side of that range, whereas, uh, I did one of the first fifty-five and overs in the town of Bill Ricker back in nineteen-ninety, and it was really seventy-five and over, although it was called a fifty-five and over, and I think over the twenty-five years since then, uh, these projects are now appealing to a younger, um, group of people who are still very active, many of which still both work, sometimes out of the house, sometimes not, and I think that first floor, our, an open first floor with bedrooms up may have some appeal, so we have one unit that, that has just that, um, but like I said, I think the larger demand will be the first-floor master with a second-floor guest bedroom, and there'll be a loft, and that loft will be open, it's not closed, many times it, there's a one wall that overlooks down below, like over the foyer, um, there's no closet in that room, and for market reasons and for square footage reasons, for the feasibility of the project, um, I expect to, uh, continue with that, that floor plan, and, um, and we just talked about earlier how I intend to, um, limit the bedrooms to two, which is through a deed restriction, so, anyways, just so that you have the latest and we don't confuse them with any earlier plans, I'll, I'll, I'll have these plans sent over to Board of Health tomorrow, I can email them and you can, you know, do your evaluation of those.
That'd be great, and are they identified A, B, C, D, or something like that?
Yes, yeah, they have their own names, A, B, C, and D.
If we evaluate each of the individual ones, then whatever mix comes out in the end, at least we'll have gone through the plans.
Yeah, I'll be glad to email, but you can have a hot copy right now.
Oh, great, okay.
So the featured unit would be two bedrooms also?
Yes, that's right.
And what, what is the deed restriction? Do you just explain, this is what you're proposing?
Well, it's something that, um, it's, it's not something new that I've come up with, um, I've used this in other projects, and many times in towns that have septic systems and, uh, because of Title V and bedroom restrictions, um, we've used a restriction in the deed that basically tells the owner that this is a two-bedroom unit, it never can be anything but a two-bedroom unit, you can't go on and, um, finish it as a third bedroom or a fourth bedroom, it's got to be always a two-bedroom, um, home, so they don't have to come in.
Is that in a condominium document?
Yes.
And in the unit deed?
In the unit deed too, it'll be a restriction in the unit deed.
Right, the DEP actually has a form of it that a lot of other towns have used, it goes on about a page and a half.
It's entitled by-
And, and again, just so that we all know where, where we're likely to wind up here, this issue of what's a valid restriction and what changes can be made to units later, and who's going to wink, wink, finish off the basement, have their kid living there, um, and other things that human beings do when they think nobody's looking, um, uh, it's likely that, in the case of the other project, the solution is going to be one that we'll propose here, which is those, those handcuffs will be, you know, very clear, bold legends in the, in the deeds, um, because then if you're marketing it the way it's been permitted, at least there's, there's symmetry, um, and, and, you know, it, it's not you guys were so much worried about, it's the people who buy from you typically then say, oh, well, jeez, my kid had to move back in, I'm putting him in the basement, to heck with that, and, you know.
And usually policing itself, because usually your neighbor next door isn't going to want you to take advantage of the system.
Well, we're going to hope that the condominium documents encourage that sort of neighborly, um, policing.
Oh, and can I just make one other point, since we talked on to this relatively recently with another, um, you know, sort of development in town, is that it's, it needs to be both on the master deed as well as the individual unit deed, so just when you're moving forward, I think there was confusion initially, like, oh, if we just put it on the master deed, it's fine, it has to run with each separate unit, because they're transacted on an individual basis, so.
Well, that's right, and, and in my concept, the, the condominium documents would say, every mortgage legal description has to include this too, in bold letters, so that you can't have a foreclosure letter say, golly, I had no idea.
Yeah, that's how you really legal, so.
Well, having done a lot of foreclosures, it's amazing how forgetful people become.
Yeah.
All right, well, it does sound like we're sort of headed in, in a similar direction on that, I think we would like to know for our records, if you can do it easily, what the gross-
Right, they pretty much did it right now, and they seem, um, for this set, right, the issue is going to be the unfinished basement and the lure of that, and then the temptation to close off that loft, there are a couple designs where it's just a-
Yeah, it's, it's very easy to convert.
Some of them are more open than others, yeah.
That's the problem.
Well, that's, that's where you as an architect and you as our Board of Health will be particularly useful to this board, be able to say, here's what you need to prohibit, and that's where we'll start putting in big letters, you know, don't touch that loft open space, don't finish off that basement.
Yeah, because the basement finishing brings up the room count is the issue, just six rooms, so.
Of course it does. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's got to go across the board, I mean, it's parking their cars, you're not going to be able to come here and have a four-car family, it's not, you, you shouldn't be here either, because you only have a two-bedroom unit.
Well, it's a great thing all these units face each other, if someone's bringing in, you know, they're, 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 they're ten-in-laws every, every night, that people will notice.
There's a lot of building control here.
Okay.
Septic design, did you want to mention that? We don't have any.
Um, yeah, I did mention that.
So are the, are the basements an option, or?
We do have, um, what we think are, maybe five of the units have walkout basements, so there is-
And those are the ones that are easily converted into livable space.
Well, they certainly make better living space, um, and-
Yeah, legally, you have windows of size.
That's right, there would be full-size windows, there'd probably be at least a six-foot patio door, brief, uh, one side would be fixed, the other side would be a, a swinging door, also, full, probably full-lit, so that it would bring actual light into the basement on top of, uh, full, some full-size windows, uh, and our intention with those basements is, again, to have language in both, well, in the master deed, uh, I think the unit deed will, I'll have to speak to my lawyer about this and actually get the actual language that we would be proposing, but, um, I think the master deed would speak to what can and can't be done with those basements.
So there won't be any half-baths or anything in those basements?
Well, um, personally, to me, a half-bath doesn't mean it's a bedroom, um, these, those spaces could be a rec room, they could be a little health exercise room, a TV room, um, and-
Learning for the grandchildren, and they're visiting.
Yeah, that's right, and, and have a half-bath down there may be appealing to the market.
I mean, you don't, you don't show them on your drawings, no?
That's right, that's right, because they would be an option, so they're not shown there, everything you see there is what would be standard, um, but I would expect that some buyers, especially on the five-to-six walkout basements, may want those finished, and we would make them aware of what they can, what they're allowed to do as far as finishing it, and, um, make sure they understand and make sure that the master deed is very clear, that, that it's not to be finished and be used as a bedroom.
So I guess the, the discussion point sort of for, for everybody in this group is, what about the half-bath down there? The half-bath down there makes it much more convenient as the rec room, as the exercise room, as everything else, it also makes it much easier to toss your boomerang kid down there, um, and it increases the temptation for abuse, and, like, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but we need to think of that through so that the buyers at least have clear guidance on what they can and can't do, that's fair to everybody.
The way the Board has treated it is that if it's a full bath connected to a room, then, then it's a bedroom, captively connected to a room, but a half-bath does not raise the same concerns, part of that account.
What about a pre-quarter bath, meaning just a shower stall?
Oh, that would qualify as a full bath for us.
That's a full, okay.
Yeah, so may, maybe that's a good compromise, which is a half-bath, uh, toilet and sink.
Being, yes, toilet and sink only.
I think that's the approach we took on another project.
Okay.
And that would be consistent with what we've done.
The other project had a proposal for a full bath, and we didn't allow that, but we did allow a half-bath.
That might be, sounds like a good way through the thicket then.
I'll also mention that, uh, since we've encountered this before, apparently because of energy code requirements, basements end up looking fairly finished, because you need to insulate the walls, so it may say unfinished basement, but I'm guessing that they're going to look pretty darn finished, with the exception of maybe exposed rafters and, and concrete floor, but, um-
Yeah, you're not going to see much plaster, um, if it's kept unfinished, um, the floor is going to be a slab, um, I know, to me, it would be very inviting finished space, unless you actually went the, the distance and opted for a, a finished room, I, I just gave the point about the insulation.
Okay, so we need to, we need to, we need to figure out a way through the thicket on, on, on the basements that probably wind up with it being conditioned space with finished walls and a real ceiling and probably a real floor and perhaps a half-bath, but no partitioning it up, no building in beds, things like that.
And then, just, um, circling back a bit, since, okay, so now we have this, so this is good for the final count, and we'll, uh, formalize that more than I did just right now, uh, but in terms of getting information, so information's forthcoming, but when we get it, will there be ample time to review it, or will we be getting it on the same night as a decision has to be finalized? So it does take some time for the agent to go through all the details on septic plans, there, you know, there's a quite a bit involved there, and calculation checking and all the rest, and measurements, uh, so-
So, as we sit here tonight-
I am requesting an extension right now, I think we're on through October thirty-first.
October third, we're not going to make that deadline.
Right, so, um, I am going to ask for an extension to the end of the last day of agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And see where we are, I- I don't expect to put you under the gun to have a short deadline, so.
Do we have a timeline for the septic plan being expected? It sounds like it hasn't hit the table yet.
It's not.
Okay, and is there an ETA for it without making a solid commitment?
Yeah, I would say it can be done in fairly short order. I mean, we've obviously planned it out, so it's just a matter of-
So it sounds like it's likely two weeks somewhere in there?
Yeah, I would say that's reasonable. I want to be on track with the portable water supply at the same time.
Two weeks, I think, even a month.
Is that enough time to review it, think about it and poke at it?
Well, if there's efficiencies, then there's going to be more time needed.
Right, right.
So, but a month is reasonable.
Okay.
Thirty days.
So we might be past the end of November, but it sounds like that we're in the, again, close.
So I'm also thinking, even though we talked about providing missing information, there was so much missing information because as I said, it wasn't really septic plans, it was drainage plans and something else. So it sounds, if it's okay with you, I think it'd be much more efficient use of the agent's time and probably of the peer reviewer for him not to go through and list everything that's missing from-
Okay, Peter, it sounds like maybe-
Oh, no, I wasn't expecting Mr. Warham to do a review on what he already had. No, that would be a total waste of his time.
Okay.
So I'm not expecting that. I would ask him though when he got the next package to then do it. Oh, I was going to correct that.
All right, sorry. All right, I misled everyone in that. I thought there was a limited universe of stuff they wanted that you didn't realize I wanted.
I already have the 72 items from the peer review engineer. I don't need any more. No, let's give it to them the next go around.
So let's forget the list of needed items, but, and replace it with, you know, they need a lot.
Yeah, no, they have not received the soil absorption plan and again, the wells that we went and we met with them, we told them that well permit that we have, we're relying on that single-family home well permit, we know that going.
Right, right.
Because we had to have something to stop.
Do you think that you're done submitting everything that you intend to submit to the Board of Health? That they'll take a look at what they have and if there's anything that they've done that they'll-
That's what I would expect to have a response later on, yes. Absolutely.
Good.
So my only point would be is that we did ask you for a number of waivers potentially and those would be the items that I'm going to still stand back and look for your support on and the agent will likely be probably looking to meet the local requirement. And again, I've raised my hand and said I-
That'll boil down to a list of where, he'll say, where's X, and you'll say, I've always asked for a waiver of X, and then it comes back to us.
There you go.
And I just want, something that two of our agents who have been to that property have noted is that there's a burn pit or some sort of potentially past disposal of something on the property and I believe that the peer reviewer just noted about 21E research and DEP file review, just to make sure you know what you're getting into on that property.
And Peter, what was your proposed-
I saw that on the peer review. I mean, I know of no reports that have been done on it by the previous owner, I don't believe Mr. Gately did in part of his acquisitions.
I think we're pretty sure the previous owner didn't, that the owner who owned it for a long time didn't make any investigations.
Yeah, you would need to go to the DEP about that, but there's visual evidence there that has caught the attention of both agents at completely separate times, so.
I mean, to the extent that we have any information, we're certainly providing. I don't mind doing, I can do a quick DEP search.
Right, you can probably do a non-invasive phase one of the type that's like, we looked at all the records and we didn't see anything.
Right, yeah.
Because it could just be an old farm burn pit or it could be something-
It was a buried burn pit near the barn, so it probably was. And deleterious material, buried deleterious material, stumps, burned material, that type of thing, buried.
Right, right. I have one of those on my property where I found burned yield light bulbs.
Yeah, so they did it happen those days. I don't know, I dug a lot of holes out there and I didn't find anything good, so. No buried treasure, none of those things.
But also nothing really bad.
No, 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 that's what I was going to say, just no treasures.
Did you find a pet cemetery?
Did not find a pet cemetery. I have been on sites when we have uncovered cattle.
Yes.
Yes, that's not the funnest thing to do, but it has been there.
All right.
And when you find more than one, you start to say to yourself, oh, this is not fun at all, so.
All right. Other, so Board of Health, it sounds like the bottom line is you want to look at bedroom counts carefully, you've got a whole lot of information you're waiting for, you need a file-
Well, now that we have this, we can just write it down.
Good.
It was just kind of, who knows, I wasn't sure.
And you need disposal works plans, so you can take a look at that and you need-
Absolutely, and then the pump tests.
Right, there's a lot of paperwork on the pumps, on the wells. Okay. And Tom, do you sort of agree that that's the reasonable shopping list and work list?
Yeah, definitely. We had obviously the same concerns about the, how the unit should be ranked in terms of Title V bedroom counts. You know, I guess maybe we don't have the most up-to-date plans, but, you know, your main constraints are the 440 and 550 gallons per day acre and they've got so much land. So, you know, we're familiar with the Title V restrictions. My firm is actually a health agent for two municipalities, so we're familiar with the deed restrictions, but, you know, that being said, in just about every municipality we work with, the topic of unauthorized conversions or conversions that maybe aren't completely identified in boards' decisions, they always come up and somehow you end up with more bedrooms. We need to be very specific in terms of both the floor plans and the restriction, but it's a point well taken to include in both the deeds of the units and the master deed. And maybe a little off-topic, but kind of on-topic, particularly as it relates to the water and wastewater issues here, we've got this whole utility plant that these 12 homeowners are going to have to operate. So I'm sure you do anyway, but we have a particular concern that the applicants submit a very detailed homeowners association document, have it reviewed by the board, you know, maybe haven't been viewed by town council, but there's kind of an exceptional burden here to have the homeowners association function properly because they've got the usual snow removals and all that, but they've got water supply and sanitary sewage disposal to deal with also.
So you would say a lot of this hinges on your item 49, the homeowners' mandatory plan, which is don't just hire Fred and his brother, the management company, in business since last week, plan on a big-budget item for a real property manager who knows how to take care of all these complicated systems.
And memorializing that you can't in the documents, but require-
We had said you, there will be a professional manager.
Yeah, you said that.
There are sophisticated systems here that do need to be managed.
Right.
So we are well aware of that.
Right.
And the stormwater too, that one.
Right.
Yep.
And actually, that would help with something that's come up before on larger projects like this, with shared systems, and that's educating the occupants because now the bad action of just one unit could result in killing all of the beneficial bacteria that are helping to break down the waste in the septic system and then now you have a whole lot of that going rather than just one home. It's being affected by that if people are dumping a lot of bleach or paints or other reesees, other sorts of things into the system, so.
It's documented that one community had a triplex and system failed in one year because people were cooking with a lot of oil, disposing it, killed the system in one year. So that's very concerning.
When you're running a project with a shared system like this, can you, and some family, we'll call them the Novax, cooks with grease and puts it down the drain and coax the system for everybody, is there a way to tell who did it? I mean, I know in large commercial projects, they send snakes with cameras up looking to see who put the acids down and ruined the town's sewer system.
You can with grease, they figured out who was-
They can go back and look.
But that was only three units.
Right, right, but this, but-
I would have said you probably can tell because in the situations that I've had, we find the section by using the camera to go up the sewer and you can pretty much find it and you're like, okay, now we know where it goes because it's usually the very next service up the line that has the same detail. So it's usually pretty evident. And the applications that I've been involved in have been commercial, so, you know, that's what I'm saying, you know where it came from.
Maybe we can think about putting in your documents and our conditions, something like that, that will give the board and the property manager the right incentives to say to people, we really, we really mean it. I mean, just in our town, you guys have put hundreds of no garbage grinder restrictions and I talk to people all the time, they say, is that really important? Like, not if you don't mind replacing your septic system. It's kind of expensive.
And following on the heels of the discussion of what if something happens and then you find out or not find out who did it, are there money set aside to replace that? Because I would imagine that the fight that might ensue when it comes up that, oops, you need to replace the shared septic system, could be dragged out for a long time and meanwhile there's a poorly functioning septic system in the interim.
Is that something you can buy insurance for?
Insurance, you would have to be properly funded through your organization, you're not going to have anyone who wants to buy in, so, I mean, there's going to be some annual charges.
Right, but it sounds like a casualty-type event.
Are you sure against it?
But for misuse sake, I'm not sure that you could-
Yeah, it's hard, you know, if some unit owner, again, we'll call them the Novax, was careless with fire and burned down several units, that's an insurable risk.
Right.
Might be worth looking into.
Yeah, I hope that.
I'm wondering, far outside any engineering expertise, but I have seen homeowners' documents which give the municipality the right to lean the property to repair things if there's insufficient funds, the homeowners' association handles. But again, that's something for the review of the homeowners' association.
Right, right. We'd rather not be their police on this. We'd rather have them be their police and have them writing the checks. But my-
With the investment being made, I can't, I was just going to say, given the investment that's being made, there's just no way that, you know, I just can't imagine that being the case.
Right.
You've got 12 of these units worth X dollars, it's just not going to go in that direction, I just can't.
You would think, you would think.
I just can't, I can't imagine it going.
Human beings always surprise all of us, though.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
Okay. Anything else we need to keep the Board of Health for at this point? This has been very helpful for us to hear. Anything else we need to hear other than that, there's a lot you need to know?
Anybody? Rebecca, Lisa, Ellen, Mark.
We asked when we could expect to see the septic system plans. When can we expect to see the well test results and when will they be scheduling the well contest with us?
Same sort of timeline. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is I wanted to have these things go together.
Two weeks with a swag factor around it?
Honestly, I hope we'd be there already.
Okay.
And you want to observe, be there to observe?
Yeah, I have to, they have to contact us to set up the well, four hours sustained well pump test for our requirements, I assume.
Except it's like a well field, so I'm thinking simultaneous pumping.
And you're going to invite the neighbors to-
Yes, I want, I'm going to go, not just the Markersons, I mean, we're going to go to all the wells in that collective area and again, if one of those neighbors opts not to have us participate, I'm going to document that and that's, they're elective.
Right.
So this will be a 48-hour sustained overnight.
Yeah, possibly in those, if you have different recommendations.
The ones that I said I would want to talk to the, okay, so we'll work it out.
All right, okay.
Are you using any guidance for that 48-hour sustained RDV regulations?
That's what I'm saying, we're going to use guidance to make our, help make our decision because the Sherbin has their rules and regulations and all I'm just saying is let's look at what else is out there, see what those are, as, and if DEP had one, it would be great, you could say that's the benchmark and you go from there.
Not for private.
Right. So all I'm saying is that I don't want to sit here and say we're not going to do anything. I also don't want to sit here and say we're agreeing to do everything because I'm just, I'm not, I'm not the professional in that area. I don't have the expertise. So I just want to do what's reasonable and right and I will make sure that that is the case. What's reasonable and right will be done.
And I named 48 hours because that's come up in the past from prior peer reviewers and some recommendations and that's why if you have something that you might want to add or differ, I mean-
PSC supports the 48 hours.
What does the 48 hours?
We need to pump test of both wells.
So we're all going to have our water running for 48 hours?
No, no, not today.
As you know, you already saw, Mrs. Markerson, you saw water coming out. I mean, that's the point, is that, that's what I have reservations about, is running the well for 48 hours, you know, how many gallons of water, I am going to be disciplined on the site.
But if you put it back on the land properly so that it can reinfiltrate and not run off down the road, then it goes back into the ground and it, the cycle is completed.
It's go back on the line, no stop.
And who's going to be running this test? Who's going to be monitoring this test?
That's a good question.
Is it your professional doing it with him watching?
That's right. I would expect that.
About 48 hours.
You can take bathroom breaks.
Might get, need to get the whole team, three of us out there.
Right, right.
And is it going to be an open pump sustained or is it going to be a regulated sustained pump rate?
Again, I'm going to have the professional in on this, go through that analysis and, you know, again, 48 hours is just a number that somebody pulled up. 24 hours, 12 hours, 3 hours, 4 hours, there's all sorts of different tests. I just want to let that professional make that decision.
Okay.
And I'll come back to you with that proposal and anyone can raise their reservations about it in advance of it being done, but I'm going to come back to you with his proposal.
So we get, you're going to talk to your professional, you're going to let your professional make a recommendation to you, hopefully it's going to meet the local requirements and if there's a reason why it doesn't, then that's a decision you'll make.
Exactly.
Just for clarity in that, we're expecting them two weeks as well, that'll be delivered to us, that professional's reviewing that.
I am very hopeful, that's the only reason why the soil absorption system isn't here because I want to do them in tandem, they're not independent pieces, they need to be done together.
To the extent in between now and when the board next meets, there's a disconnect between what your professional says is the right way to do it and what the Board of Health concludes is the right way to do it, it's possible there could be some wisdom in talking to our planner as sort of our, the board's eyes and ears and you may still talk to him and still be completely loggerheads, in which case that's the way it is, but just trying to come up with ways to have things work.
Well, would you have an indication by a week from now on what your professional would recommend?
I would hope so.
I just mentioned, since you have a meeting scheduled next week, if that's an issue that needs to be resolved.
We do, yeah, that's an excellent point. We do meet on another subject on the 25th and if there's some showstopper issue, you could come before us, although I don't think we can really solve it on the spot. You'll probably just have to proceed with, okay, you're going to do it this way and you know that the Board of Health will be lobbing rocks at it.
Right, and again, from my perspective, I would be doing something that I at least know that the state would find as being a reasonable approach to this. I would not come back and try to do something that wasn't meeting at least that level of DEP. So I think you should feel confident that what we're just talking about is what they're asking for over and above. That's the only concern I have, that's the only reservation I have.
Right, right.
Is it necessary to do it to that extent?
Correct.
That is it. And this will be proved out without doing that and that's the only point that I'm making.
If I may, if it's okay, would we have access to our peer reviewer, do we have the resources?
The peer reviewer technically, and I'm looking at our 40B advisor, John from Beals and Thomas, as I'm saying this, because I think this issue has come up in other contexts, technically the peer reviewer only works for us. And so we can ask him to look at other things and have, but we don't have the ability under the rules and regulations to say, and go get a peer reviewer for Board of Health and go get a peer reviewer on the job.
For this 48 hours versus maybe two, three, four hours, but that's something-
If he's available and can weigh in on an issue that seems to be a tiebreaker, that'll be useful to us, but it's-
Right, because I'll say it'd be nice, since we have done this before and we've had various peer reviewers or other kind of technical experts work on this issue of multi-wells on one property that are going to be operating close together. multi-wells on one property that are going to be operating close together.
Right.
And pumping a fair amount. Is, they're being treated as private wells, there are no state-level private well regulations.
Right.
For public water supplies, the pump tests are often quite a bit longer, and for certain circumstances like bedrock wells, which these would be, sometimes it's months of testing. So I don't think, my estimate right now is that 48 hours is, does not seem to be a unreasonable amount of time in comparison to that, so we're not looking for that, we're just looking for something that's going to show that.
Okay.
You know, 48, more than 48 hours might be nice, too, but I'm going to leave that as a question that we are going to have.
Right, right.
And maybe you can forward it to the peer reviewers, you see that.
Well, because Gino is not only authorized, but requested to communicate directly with the peer reviewer, because the board isn't meeting every day, that is, that is the fast way through that, that thicket.
And everything comes to you and the consultant, so, I mean, for distribution, I don't, I definitely see it going to peer reviewers.
Right, right.
So I'm not concerned about that.
Right, right. And I hope all of you hear us, that ideally, we'd like to hear that everybody agreed on, this is the protocol that fits this project. It's not full public water supply, it's not nothing either, and somewhere between those two wide endpoints on a spectrum, there may lie wisdom, and you may not be able to agree. We understand and hear you on that, too. All right. Board of Health, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one more item to you that I brought up earlier, so if you may, one more.
Is it relevant to the, is it relevant to the Board of Health?
It's lighting.
Lighting, okay, that's probably, that's probably not a big issue.
I have, I have a couple of items that peer reviewer have a lot like that. I'll wait till they can listen. So, so on, on lighting, I mean, we have our units where we've got a porch, so we're going to have a sothic-type light.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'm thinking of, as well, as well.
At the front door?
Yeah, yeah, the front, right, so the front door would have illumination, and then-
The garage also.
All right, so the garage, so each building unit itself will have illumination around it. So from a homeowner's perspective, when they get to their residence, you know, there's, there's going to be lighting around their dwelling unit. To the extent we light beyond that, we definitely would like to have some home, the street light, if you will, at our intersection, because we think it's important. And then, if our lighting around our facility, we also thought there'd be some security lighting. And what form it's in is a concern that I have as a designer, because there are light fixtures that we say are dark sky compliant, we say there are light fixtures that are aesthetically pleasing, that are, you know, gas lantern-type look, but then would have illumination that's going to be lost to the sky. So I didn't know if there was a preference. We, you know, I gave then actually a bunch of fixtures tonight to say, you should literally look at this and pick something, because we definitely have that illumination around the site. It is a residential property, you know, folks who live across the street from us have a driveway light, you know, at, at their intersection of their street, and most of them are probably going to be lantern-type, so they're, they're not dark sky compliant.
I would hope the applicant could identify a dark skies compliant fixture that they consider to be aesthetically pleasing.
Okay, and I did give him a number of those to pick from. You tend to need a few more of those, because what's happening is the light is, depending on what height we set them at, that light is being cast down. It's not being cast out, so you end up with a higher frequency of fixtures when you do that.
Didn't we have the same issue?
So dark sky compliant means that the light is-
It's up in the head of the fixture, and it's casting that light down.
Okay. Just doesn't project light upward, so if you look at the night sky, if everybody did it, you'd have a much nicer view of the night sky. It's kind of a widespread approach in design.
The classic thing that is not dark sky compliant is the 90-watt incandescent flood lamp mounted laterally on the side of the garage.
Yes, yes.
Because it goes out and up.
You can notice a lot of the conventional old Cobra Head light fixtures that municipalities use, they're now using capped ones, the direct gold light out, so it's kind of widespread yet.
Sure, LED. And we are going to use an LED fixture, I mean, everything they're going to do in this, all these dwelling units will have LED ones in them, so.
Ron, wasn't there a lot of detailed discussion of this same issue over on Whitney Street? Is there any guidance from that on this? No, because they had, they're-
They have, they have a lantern type.
Right.
They don't have dark sky, but I believe on-
They're uphill neighbors, it was going to shine on that.
No, there's concern. I mean, my, my preference is a dark sky.
Okay.
The light down, reduce the glare.
Right.
But pole height, I mean, because like I said, because the, the illumination on these won't extend as far, I mean, you tend to get a pole that's a little bit higher, so they're a little bit more effective. Just saying, we've, we've created this up, I just don't want anyone to be disappointed. So I'd probably be looking at a pole that's more in the 11, 12-foot height.
Mm-hmm.
Versus something that's like, you know, 8 feet. Like, it's your traditional lantern, if you're in your driveway, most homes are going to be like 6 feet, that's what Home Depot is going to sell that you can get, but it's going to be a regular open lantern, it's going to cast that light out. So we get, the poles have to be a bit higher to get the light to cast out.
Okay, so it's, it's a, it's a design challenge, but do you hear the, the trend of the preference is, is towards dark sky, if, if something can be done along those lines?
Right, and we are, and we are going to light our facility, so I just also didn't want the board to be here, well, we, you know, we would rather see you more of a, you know, a shadow on the street than illuminated along the street.
There, there has historically in town been a very loud voice on that subject, but not next to you, and, and it's not an issue right now.
And, and there'll be an actual lighting plan, that was submitted to the site plan?
Absolutely, yes. I fully expected to do that. I know you brought it up. That's what I'm saying, we fully expected to do it.
All right, great. Thank you for, thank you for raising that. So it sounds like you want another regular meeting, say, well, so you're going to give Samantha or Gene an extension to 30, to the 30th of November. I gave you the form. I meant to give you the form. Did I give you the form?
Yes, you did.
Okay. I must have printed two of them. When would we next, when do you think it's productive to come back in here?
Do you have a meeting already defined in November?
No, and I was hoping to not be here on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that week is a very lousy week.
Be the following week.
The following week.
It's almost a full week, the following. But it's a full meeting.
So you're, you're thinking of the week after Thanksgiving, that's sort of third week in November?
It's going to work.
Or it's the fourth week in November, Sarah?
Yeah, 29th or 30th.
You know what, Ben, if you wouldn't mind filling that extension out into December, then we could pick the 30th without being in a, in a, in a, in a super tight box.
That's a good idea.
Here's another if he's already filled it out. So. It's sounding like the Wednesday, the 29th, Thursday, the 30th?
Neither one, sorry. Schedule this tomorrow or the next day. The only reason I'm saying is that I've got to, I've got to get back to Miles and something.
I see.
Continue this to your meeting a week from now. We're not going to attend, and you can then get, tell us what the date is.
Okay, let's do that.
Then there's no sense, it sounds like he's not prepared.
We'll continue to the 25th of October, for the purposes of being able to set a new date, and when you're not there to here, discuss us with it. We will not be insulted.
We will not be insulted.
Much.
That makes more sense, because then you can check us down.
All right, so we're off to October 25th. And, but what we're going to try to do is target the week of the 28th, 29th, 30th of November. And Gene Guthrie, can I correct that tonight's meeting missed by Roger is the first meeting missed by any of the members for this project?
I see. John, is there any?
I don't think so.
All right, well, let's, let's check, let's check the minutes, because if he's missed only one, he can watch the tape, read the minutes, sign the affidavit, and still be good. And Roger can do the same thing.
Roger, I think this is the first one Roger's made.
Right. I just don't want to wind up with not enough members who can vote. Any comments from, it's quarter to anybody comments from anybody else here tonight wishing to be heard? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to continue us to the 25th of October?
I move that we continue on the 25th of October.
Time?
Eight o'clock, here.
About 7:30.
Well, we, no, 7:30 is the executive session.
7:30 is the executive-
Session with the town council.
Then 8 o'clock, you have to hear him.
Right, but we could do five minutes at the beginning.
Quickly.
We could do five minutes at the beginning to set the date. Okay. Eight o'clock, here at Town Hall. And we probably will be in 204B, all right, because we won't be recording. And thus, do they want to have our discussion on tape?
And John, he's using this room, I'll just keep it in here.
204A or B?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? We're off. Samantha, you got something signed from him? Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. John, anything we're doing horribly wrong? Anything, anything we're doing remotely right? Yeah, Tom, thank you very much for being here. Very, very helpful. Unless we have other matters that you guys would really like to discuss, we could consider adjournment. Not that I didn't leave my house 15 hours ago, but-